All right. We have a minor technical slow-up, but our secretary is going to take care of us the old-fashioned way with shorthand. So those of you that thinks that shorthand never comes in is needed anymore. We're testament to the fact that sometimes the old-fashioned ways have to kick in when technology is a little slower than we want it to be. All right, with that, we will adjourn the special board of education closed session at 7:08 and convene the regular board of education open session meeting. Mr. Williams, would you lead us into pledge?
Yes, please. Together, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Mr. Williams. Let the roll call show that all the board members are present except Mazuko, who's excused for health issues. Staff is all here. Our student rep has not arrived yet. Haven't heard from her, so hopefully she'll show up here shortly. Board of Education, this evening, we discussed some issues of the collective bargaining. No decisions were finalized. Order of business. Are there any changes to the order of business? Hearing none. Could I get a motion to approve the minutes of the March 11 board session?
Second.
Any discussion? Does Mariconda please take the vote?
Board member Williams?
Yes.
Board member Hammond?
Yes.
Board member Wong?
Yes.
President Galalan?
Yes.
Motion carries for zero.
All right, and with that, we'll move on to our recognitions. So... All right, is this mic on? Yes, it is. All right, I want to start off with recognition of our first annual SELPA art show featured artist, and I gotta get one more thing from my desk here, and I'll be right back. Sorry about that, I want to get this right. A SELPA is a special education local plan area, and the SELPA that we're part of is constituted with 14 school districts. So on Thursday, March 12th, our SELPA had their first art show. We were well represented by our SELPA students and classes, and the featured artist of the entire show was Abraham Mungia, one of our students. He's in our adult transition program. In addition, we had students from Monroe, Mayflower, Monrovia High School ceramics class that received awards. Our teachers, including Mr. Perez at Monrovia High, Yolanda Cork-Antony, and staff did a great job at supporting these students and creating beautiful work. So I'd like to bring Abraham Mungia up. That's not him. No, no, no. How are you? I understand you did some beautiful artwork for this show. We appreciate it. And believe it or not, the way this meeting is started, your certificate is still in the back. It will be here shortly, and we'll get a certificate, but we so appreciate what our teachers do, and we're so proud of this young man here and the art that he produced. Can you take a minute and just kind of tell us what all artwork you did while they're getting your certificate? I don't want to put you on the spot, but if you can, that would be great. All right. Anyway, the show was centered around his artwork, and it's beautiful, and we want to give you this certificate that says, "Monrovia Unified School District Board of Education, recognizing and congratulate Abraham Mungia as the featured artist in the first annual SELPA art show." Thank you so much, Danielle. Stay up here for George will join me. Beautiful. Next, we would like to recognize and congratulate the Southern Section Eastern Division Girls' Wrestling Champion, Brianna Dominguez. So Brianna and coaches, if the wrestling coaches would come up also. Great job, Brianna. We're so proud of you for bringing this CIF championship home. The Monrovia Unified School District Board of Education recognizes and congratulates Brianna Dominguez as the CIF Southern Section Eastern Division 2015 Girls' Wrestling Champ, and we have a little medal here and a certificate. Congratulations. And if you'd stand right there, I'll bring your coaches up, and we'll get a picture up here. Of course, she did the hard work, but Coach Sean Wilson was here to help, and with those skills and support her, and we appreciate you so much, Coach.
Thank you.
And also Coach Daniel Hernandez. Thank you so much. So for those of you that couldn't hear it, the coaches said, "Oh, that's the first time we got a medal."
Well, good evening, everybody. I am privileged to be able to come up here and keep this CIF winning train alive. You know, last year, I was up here about the same time, and we were talking about how the bar was really set up pretty high last year. So Coach Williams was the Rio Hondo League Coach of the Year. The team went undefeated and were league champions. It's phenomenal. So we thought that would be a pretty tough thing to match, considering they had lost 17 seniors. Just an amazing number. And lo and behold, here they are again, exceeding all expectations, not winning league, but winning CIF for the first time in Monrovia history for soccer. Then after winning the CIF title, advancing all the way to the state regional semifinals for a first time as well. So let's give them a hand for that. And with that, I would like to bring Coach Williams up, and he can introduce his players. Now, instead of being Coach of the League, he is the CIF Division VI Coach of the Year.
Yeah. Can I have the assistant coaches come up, please? Hector, where are you guys? Brandon and Arturo. We're missing two coaches. Coach Griffin got stuck in club registration, and our fitness coach, Andrew, is missing, and he's probably doing fitness somewhere. So will you help me pass these out? So the goalkeeper, Taylor Barso. Did Ryan show up? Ryan Windy Fender. I think he's missing. Demorey Aline. Attacking mid Jonathan Golling. Chris Wong received CIF Player of the Year, scoring 36 goals and 28 assists. Winning forward Ignacio Romero. Attacking mid Brian Nava. Getting to the bottom there. Goalkeeper Edward Youssef. And I believe that's it. Thank you very much. It's been, it was a great season. I can't do it without the coaches that I have and the coaching staff. Thirty-five years of coaching, I can tell you, you can take moderate players, a good coach can take moderate players and make them competitive. The same coach can take talent and make them winners, and that's what we had. We have talent here at Monrovia, so it's easy to make them winners. Griffin Harding did an excellent job at providing all the on-field coaching. Hector Ramirez. Hector Ramirez is the goalkeeper coach, and by far, he did an outstanding job. We had 20, 20, 21 shutouts. Twenty-one shutouts, that's an amazing number, 21 shutouts. Arturo Ramirez, the JV assistant coaches and help with varsity, giving us support. And Brandon, you're not on there, Brandon, I'm sorry. We'll get you one. And I think it starts at the beginning of the year when we had Andrew and I out there doing the conditioning. We did a lot of conditioning, which made us last all the way to the very end, I think. Even with a couple of my players with injuries playing through game after game after game, coming off the field and icing their ankles so they could play in the next game, we got through it. Great, great team, great season.
And Coach, I'm going to read yours. This says, "Monrovia Unified School District Board of Education recognizes and congratulates Mike Williams, head coach of the Monrovia High Boys Varsity Soccer Team, 2014-15 CIF Southern Section Division VI Champions and CIF Southern California State Regional Division III Semifinalists. Great job, Coach. Thank you so much." And before you walk away, I mean, we had to recognize you as coach, but we also want to give you this certificate that says, "Mike Williams, head coach of the Monrovia High School Boys Varsity Soccer Team and 2014-15 CIF Division VI Soccer Coach of the Year." That's a high honor, CIF section Coach of the Year. Great job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, and one more recognition we'd like to give out here this evening for the soccer team, and that's to Christopher Wong as the 2014-2015 CIF Southern Section Division VI Player of the Year, representing Monrovia. So Chris, we've got another certificate for you, and if you guys will all get up here and the board will join me, we'll see if we can get this whole group in one picture. We might have to take two pictures. to have a community celebration. The city, the community, the school district, we're all going to get together down in Library Park about 5 o'clock tomorrow evening and celebrate these champions as a community. School district recognizes them, but the whole community is going to get together and do that tomorrow night. So be there at 6 o'clock, at 5 o'clock at Library Park. All right, moving on then. I would like to welcome Judy Scheffler from Foothill Federal Credit Union to the podium for just a minute tonight. She represents our Business Education and Community Outreach Network, who are so kind to sponsor our Employees of the Month program, and Judy has brought with her goodie bags from several different places. So Judy, if you'd just tell us who all these sponsors are that support this and have donated tonight.
I know Excelsus did, and Doubletree, and I don't know what else is in the bags because they delivered them before I got here. Foothill should be in there, yes. So if it's not, let me know, so.
And imprintability.
And imprintability is also in there, so. They didn't share bags with me.
Thank you for being here.
You're welcome.
I'll let you hand the bags out.
Okay.
All right, could we have the principals up here? And the principals will introduce the Teachers of the Year and the classified and the certified Employees of the Year. We'll let Stacy Ears from Brad Oaks go first.
Good evening, board members. Thank you for the opportunity for us to be able to recognize Kathy Hogan for Certified Employee of the Month for Wild Rose. So come on up, Mrs. Hogan. Mrs. Hogan has been working at Wild Rose for about 17 years now. She started working before that, though, and I believe it was around 35 years ago, somewhere around there, yes, 35 years ago that she started teaching. And she grew up in New York City, and she went to Queens College and Forum University, where you got your master's in education, and we're lucky enough to have her here in Monrovia, where she is currently teaching third grade at Wild Rose Elementary. She's also taught first grade and second grade, but she tells me that third grade is, of course, her favorite. And this year, she has been working diligently to get all of our third graders proficient. As part of our LCAP plan, we've been focusing on third grade literacy, and Mrs. Hogan is really a teacher leader on our campus, leading that endeavor. She has been attending quite a few professional development trainings this year, and she is working with the third grade, with teachers at her grade level, that this is their first year teaching third grade with her. So she is truly a leader at her grade level, where she has been sharing lots of ideas and sharing her knowledge, but she is much too humble to ever say that that's the case. She will say that she's learning more from them than they are learning from her, but I know otherwise, because her depth and breadth of experience that she has had in the classroom is definitely reflecting on her colleagues that she's working with in her grade levels. The other part of it is that Mrs. Hogan has become a leader in the district in implementing Nancy Fetzer strategies. She went to training over the summer, and when we've had some third grade PLCs, Mrs. Hogan has been the one in the spotlight, where 30 teachers have come into her classroom at a time to watch her teach the new Nancy Fetzer strategies that we've been implementing, and she truly has become a leader amongst the district as well. And you know, the other thing I have to share with you is that Mrs. Hogan has a number of people here in the audience, and over the years, as I've been principal at Wild Rose, Mrs. Hogan is always the first to get in her recognitions for someone that she wants to nominate for this award. And every single time I stand at the podium to celebrate someone, she is always in the audience to celebrate them as well. And so this just kind of speaks to the type of person that she is, where she truly cares about her colleagues here at Wild Rose. She cares about her friends, where she has connections outside of school with a book club, and she has a great support system in her husband Phil, as well as her son Matt, who are here this evening to celebrate with her. So I'm very excited to give Kathy Hogan the opportunity to be the Employee of the Month at Wild Rose, because it is much deserved. Congratulations, Kathy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy, if you would stay up here, we're going to have a photo op here, and the board would like to greet you and thank you in just a moment. Principals, okay, I'm gonna blow this direct. That's kind of embarrassing. Wonderful principal over at, excuse me, wait just a minute. She's our wonderful principal over at Brad Oaks, and we want to welcome you to introduce your Employee of the Month.
Good evening. I have the opportunity to recognize two Employees of the Month, and I will read about my first. Mrs. Sherman, "You are the best teacher. I love you." These are words often said by first grade students at Brad Oaks. Tanya Sherman is a part of our five-person first grade team. Although she is working a job share this year, she is often on campus assisting Brad Oaks students and staff in many ways. She can be found planning, researching, and developing lessons aligned to the common core, or tutoring former students in her last year's fourth grade class. She is often working hard in the PTA room or attending a grade level meeting. She loves to share her findings and new learnings with her team because she is so passionate about education and her role in the lives of young learners. By the time the sun rises, you can bet Tanya Sherman is already hard at work preparing for a great day in the first grade. Her job share partner feels she is inspired by Tanya and what she offers as an educator, a friend, and a teammate. I would like to congratulate Mrs. Tanya Sherman for being recognized as the outstanding Employee of the Month. Well deserved. And now I get to return, so here I go. This year, our staff honors someone who works behind the scenes and after the scenes at Brad Oaks. Mary Lou Pachardo has worked for the District Village Program for many years. She has been supervising Brad Oaks students for the last four years. Her job begins early in the morning at drop-off for many students and returns again at dismissal for the afternoon and evening shift. Her job is to manage a small staff that works with approximately 100 students. Mary Lou meets regularly with the administration to ensure that she is doing what's best for kids and meeting their needs. She runs a program that gives outlets for students for homework, enrichment, nutrition, and exercise. She builds a rapport with parents and communicates with them with the true interest of their children. Mary Lou encourages parents to participate and oversees many responsibilities for the program with safety and with the student's well-being as the top priority. Her job can be tiring and goes unacknowledged since it happens primarily after we've all gone home. We give thanks and appreciation to a job well done. Thank you so much. Congratulations, Mary Lou.
If the board would join me up front, we'll congratulate these wonderful folks and have a picture opportunity here. have a picture opportunity here. What a great group, what a great staff we have, and it's always a pleasure and honor to celebrate those Employees of the Month, because they are outstanding in our unknown wonderful staff. So thank you. We will move on to Item 3.2, Board Member Reports. Board Member report, Mr. Williams. I guess I'm the only one with a report tonight. I have several items to cover. The strategic planning effort is continuing in the district. We had a great meeting last night with community members, stakeholders from all around, looking at what our goals for the next five years are gonna be, looking what our vision and mission are, and that team is working really hard. Appreciate everyone that's putting all the effort into that. The Parents Academy last Saturday, the March for Balance program is ongoing, Healing Connections is a Golden Bell Award-winning program here in the district, and they just put on a wonderful, wonderful Parent Academy to help parents understand issues surrounding teen suicide, teen depression, and helping them be able to find the resources and help their teens cope with life's difficult issues. So I want to thank everyone that worked so hard to put that on, and all those folks that are on the committees, the Healing Connections and the March for Balance group. Great job in that. Canyon Oaks Mountain Park had their open house. Mr. Hammond and I were there. They did an excellent job. They did something a little different, which was show us the career pathways that are being developed, so that our students understand what math is for, what English is for, how that fits in with their future careers. So that when you look at drama, you think acting. Well, they also need to think about writing, and script-writing, and editing, and all those things that go along with putting on a drama production. And so we looked at the drama, we looked at fine arts, we looked at the construction curriculum, and the health curriculum, and how these different classes fit into the knowledge, gaining the knowledge that students need to go on to careers in these fields. And I'm just excited about the effort to develop those career pathways, so that students understand what experiences they need as they're in the schools to open doors to those career pathways. So thanks to Canyon Oaks Mountain Park for doing a great job in presenting that to us at the open house. Also, went to a workshop that Los Angeles County School Trustees Association put on concerning adult education, and I just wanted to report a little bit to the Board on that meeting, because once again, we find that nobody understands how the funds are gonna be allocated for adult education. They messed with our funding this year, as the Board is quite aware, the issues with that. But as they've, the State, they, the "they" is the State Board of Education and the State Legislature, as they discuss what's the future of adult education, they've required the local consortiums to develop plans, but they have not indicated how the funding is gonna be distributed. There's a fear amongst consortiums that, well, some consortiums are looking forward to this, where they have the complete power to distribute the funding amongst the different adult schools within the consortium. But as we pointed out to the committee and the folks from Sacramento that were there, the further you put the control of the budget away from the local adult school, we have a wonderful adult school here, but as you take the funding decisions away from us, the less likely it is that that adult school funding and what is desired upon will meet the needs of Monrovia. So I would ask everyone to, you know, if there's opportunities to talk to your legislatures, write to your legislatures, whatever, to encourage them to support adult education and the local needs of that adult education. We have a great school, and we want to keep it viable. That's my report. Our student hasn't made it tonight, so we will move on to 3.4, report from the Superintendent.
Thank you, President Gillant, members of the Board. We had a unique opportunity today at the Santa Fe Village Program to watch our students perform in a very abridged version of Julius Caesar. And mentoring them through this play and project over the last several weeks were actors and directors from A Noise Within Theater in Pasadena. And you could tell they were having a great time. I can't wait until they actually have a chance to perform before each of you. Also, and this is news, you hate to surprise the Board publicly, but it's a good surprise. I learned today that Susan Hirsch has been selected as Congresswoman Judy Chuse Woman of Distinction Award, representing the city of Monrovia. And so it's a great honor for Susan, and of course, reflects upon the quality and caliber of personnel and people committed to this district. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Therosian. We'll move on to Item 3.5, Public Comment for Items Not on the Agenda. The Board of Education encourages public participation and invites you to share your view on school businesses. If you desire to address the Board of Education, please fill out a form and give it to Ms. Marakonda here. In order to accomplish board business in a timely, efficient manner, we'll hold this comment period to be limited to 30 minutes. So Ms. Marakonda?
Yes, Mr. President, we have two requests to speak, and the first one is from Dale Rogers.
Mr. Rogers?
My reason for coming here tonight has to do with Mayflower School. I've been a resident across the street from Mayflower School for 38 years. Excuse me. In the 38 years, there's been a fence right across the street from my house. That fence has been trampled over and tramped on and climbed on and done everything on for all the years. About eight years ago, I came to a school board meeting to bring up an issue about that fence. And it's sort of ironic that they're taking it down now and putting it back up with another type of fence.
Excuse me, Mr. Rogers, if you could, take that, Mr. Rogers, over here. Could you take that microphone and bring it towards you, so that the people at home can hear you as well?
So anyway, about eight years ago, I brought it to the Board's attention about the problem with the after-school sports. The parents bring their kids, kids in tow, suitcases, ice chests, chairs, tables, everything for the after-school sports events. But because they have to go all the way around by the office area to get in there without climbing the fence, what they would do is climb the fence. 60, 70-year-old ladies climbing the fence, which was only about three foot tall, three and a half, four foot, whatever. So anyway, I was concerned about somebody falling. We did see an elderly person fall onto the sidewalk one day, and that's what prompted me to come to the meeting. So we fast-forward to today, and last week, they installed a fence up in the northern kindergarten area, which is not consistent with the standards in which the City of Monrovia Building Department has established for the City of Monrovia. And I would think that the school district would, even though you may not be bound by the laws of the city or ordinances of the city, you should be bound by the spirit of the ordinances of the city and the desires of the city population in which you serve. So therefore, what my position is, is that firstly, the proposal that they have on the table, or I should say, what's actually on the table, what's actually been put up at the kindergarten area, is going to be put down at the lower field, approximately 400 feet of chain-link fence, green vinyl-covered chain-link fence, at a cost of approximately, according to the paperwork I got, $18,000. The fence on the northern end was about 90 feet of fence. The information I received shows that we paid $8,000 for it, or $90 a foot, which is astronomical for a chain-link fence, especially when the material costs for a chain-link fence like that don't exceed $12 a foot. But that being said, the chain-link fence firstly is not allowed by the city if it were not a school project. Because you're in the school district, you're exempt because you're under the state laws. However, as I said before, the desires of the public is, we do not want chain-link fences. But coming back to the other point I brought up when I first walked in, is the chain-link fence inherently is climbable. You grab your hands through the hole, your kids' toes, they can climb right up that fence. Now that we're gonna have, or at least the proposal is, that it would be a six-foot fence, now you've got the parents and kids, because they can't access the field to go to the after-school events, they'll be climbing over the six-foot fence, which is evidenced by my driving around to all the other school facilities today, that every single chain-link fence at all the schools have been trampled on. So I feel it's incumbent upon the Board, incumbent upon the Superintendent, to look at this as a long-term plan and phasing out these types of fences, and putting in wrought iron, or I found another alternative, now I don't want to get out of line here. Firstly, on Mayflower, I feel they should consider a five-foot-tall fence, which is consistent with the laws of California and almost every other state for a pool fence, using vertical wrought iron with horizontal members spread apart far enough, which is what they consider a pool fence, 45 inches spacing between the horizontals, so you cannot climb it. A kid cannot climb it because they can't get a foothold between that 45 inches of open space. I got, even went as far as getting some preliminary proposals from local contractors in the city, that one of them does work for the City of Monrovia, actually for the city itself, and he gave me a budget number for a substantial wrought iron fence of $40,000. 400 feet, that would be from the upper field, I should say, from the entire lower field area. That still is not fenced. The kindergarten area is already done, so I mean, that's a dead issue. However, the budget number is approximately $20,000 for the vinyl fence for the lower field. What the actual number is, I don't know, because the bid that was issued apparently was not broken down into segments. So we can't pull out an item. I can't find out what the fence is specifically, because that hasn't been done yet, which brings me to another issue, that's a whole nother, I don't want to go there. But anyway, I feel that the school should come up with a standard for all the buildings within the school, and come up with a standard type of fence that over the years, they can phase in and get rid of these slightly compound infirmary or whatever type fences that were making for our kids. I think the school district, the ground should be pleasant and pleasing, not looking like they belong in some prison yard or something. But if we're gonna go ahead and start making the changes, let's take and phase them in, and now's the time to phase it in, get rid of the chain-link, put things in that are not climbable, because the tension is, at some point, we're gonna want to secure the grounds, I would hope, at some point, certain vandalism and so forth. But if we put chain-link in there, all we're gonna do is create another means for the people to climb the fence. Anyway, another alternative, which I have looked at, is the MetroLink train system. They have a wire fence that they developed for their entire system. They have it on the trains going all the way out through the valley, they have them going downtown LA, down through South LA and Long Beach. And what it is, it's a flat-wire fence made out of 3/8 steel wire, powder-coated, very sturdy, non-climbable. It's designed so it cannot be climbed, and they use them on all the railroad track separations. And I've talked to the contractor that installed the fencing on this last leg of the MetroLink today, and they're gonna give me a budget number for that. I personally think the wrought iron is probably a little nicer-looking, however, either one would be more pleasant in appearance, and also be better from a standpoint of securing the campus. So, and one of the questions I have, too, as I mentioned already, is why are we looking at six-foot-tall fencing? If you're an adult trying to reach over a five-foot-tall fence to grab Johnny, you're gonna have one hard time reaching over that fence to get a hold of the kid, unless the kid really wants to go and sticking his hands up, "Take me, take me." So from an aesthetic standpoint, five foot is a lot more aesthetically pleasing. If it's not climbable, then it's gonna serve the purpose from that standpoint, and it will be better for the neighborhoods. And the paperwork I passed out here was the city's ordinances, which basically restrict chain-link fences in any, almost every application, except for side yards and residential areas. So anyway, I think I covered most of my bases on there. Oh, one other question, or suggestion I have. Apparently, the neighborhood in my area was notified by a means of dropping something on the front porch. And I would hope that, from a proactive standpoint in the future, that the school district enact a program where if you're gonna do a substantial upgrade on the property and notify the neighbors, or if you feel important enough to notify the neighbors, do it by mail. Putting it on the front porch, in my case, I'm gone half a month, and I, my neighbor picks up the mail, and I looked at there, and I never saw it. Had I seen it, I would have been in on it and made some suggestions at that point. But we just found out on Monday, when my wife happened to see the fence up the street, and she talked to the principal of the school, and then after I heard it, I talked to some neighbors, and they said, "That's ridiculous." And some of them were supposed to be here, but I think they chickened out, and one of them is the principal at high school, and I don't think he wants to take a position on it. So, other than that, I think I covered my bases, and I would hope that you guys will entertain not using the chain-link in any of the venues from here on out. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. I'm sure you understand that if it's not on the agenda, we can't really discuss it, but we really do appreciate your input and your thoughts on that, and ask you to continue work with staff. And I know you have been, and we appreciate that, so.
I'll bring the proposal over there when I get them, and maybe we can work something out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Marakonda?
The next speaker is Hugh Hoyland.
Mr. Hoyland?
I am Hugh Hoyland. I live at 120 South Myrtle in Monrovia. I present you with a paper that sheds light on an aspect of instruction, and which casts doubt on homosexuality's normality. I give you page three of Dr. James Landris' paper, Evelyn Hooker and the Normalization of Homosexuality. of Homosexuality. Dr. Landis is a former dean of Dallas University and former analyst for the U.S. Department of Education. For the full four-page paper, access the web site, Evelyn Hooker and Normalization of Homosexuality. Here are a few points he makes. Dr. Landis points out that Kinsey did not say ten percent of the population was homosexual. He said ten percent of the male population was homosexual, and of this, only four percent were lifelong homosexuals, and the other six percent had only two or three years' experience. Dr. Hooker, Dr. Evelyn Hooker's former clinical experience was with rats, which hardly qualifies her to experiment or do research on humans. She had experienced only with rats. The study was urged on her by her friend Sam Fromm, a leader in the Matichin Society whose purpose was to gain acceptance of homosexuality as normal. Dr. Hooker allowed the Matichin Society to hand-pick subjects for testing who were as close as possible to the heterosexual norm, not a cross-section, but one deliberately chosen to boast the claim of homosexuality's normality by a very interested Matichin Society. There is much more, but you can read that. I will say this: If you withhold this myth-shattering information from your students, as you did with my Mars Rover exhibit, you will not be educators, but mere mouthpieces for ultra-powerful interest groups. They would be big science to APL, NASA, and the homosexual community and their myriad of supporters. I am Hugh Jordan Hoyland. I seek, I find, I act. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Hoyland. Ms. Marakanda, are there any other speakers? Thank you. Item 3.5.1, Public Comments for Items on the Open Session Agenda. Are there any comment cards for the open session agenda?
I've received no request to speak.
Seeing no one looking to speak, we will move on to Item 4.0, Consent Agenda. The routine items of business are placed on the consent agenda, have been carefully screened by members of staff, enacted on by the board with one motion. Are there any items to be pulled or amended? Seeing none, could I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Marakanda, please take the vote.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board Member Williams?
Yes.
President Gillan?
Yes.
Motion carries four-zero.
All right, moving on to Item 6.1, Course Proposal for Integrated Math 1.
So moved. Second.
All right, Dr. Kaiser, would you mind giving us how this and the next several items all fit together in what we're doing?
Yes, they do, and so I'd like to speak to items 6.1 through 6.5 as a group. As you can recall, in the spring last year, the math departments came and presented to the board their plan for integrated math. To that end, we have been busy rewriting the course descriptions and the courses for those integrated classes. And so, we'd like, we're seeking approval for the course proposal for Integrated Math 1, Integrated Math 2, Integrated Math 3, Math Analysis, and Math Analysis Honors, all to be aligned to the Common Core, and those are items 6.1 through 6.5.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have a question. How are we evaluating the coursework that we have, since we just had this a year ago, and now we're changing a big chunk of it here? What are we using to make determinations whether things are appropriate or not?
Right now, these courses have been aligned to the UC and the CSU for course approval. They've been-
The ones in front of us now are the ones that we were using?
The ones that we were using, and these that are in front of us now. And so, this is the transition to the Common Core pieces that are the integrated pieces. Even if we were using the traditional model, the courses would have significant, significant changes that needed to be changed to be in alignment with what is approvable as per the accreditation.
And how are we gonna monitor whether these are effective? I have firsthand experience that the last ones were not very effective.
Right. There are two ways. One, we are beginning to look at and to utilize the Smarter Balanced interim assessments, and those are right now in the pilot phase. Those interim assessments will be, once we can get a comparison of apples to apples when they've been used over time, that will show us a trajectory of growth. The other thing is, the Smarter Balanced test, as that comes into focus, that assessment will be focused on these standards. And so, that will be assessing in the broad range, that summative, in a summative way, and comparing our districts to other districts that are utilizing the same standards.
And when you say over time, what is that time like?
We're taking the first assessment now, so we'll have this spring, so we'll have an apple-to-apple comparison per student. We will not have an API yet, but we will be receiving student scores, and so we will be able to judge whether a student is improving in their math ability and in their math content usage. We will begin to have the state accountability by the end of the year next year, and that'll put us on that same stream of comparability that we have with the CST.
So, in, at least for the math portion, it's, you're looking at an annual basis in which we're going to do comparative reviews?
We'll have interim also. We'll have the benchmarks also. And the benchmarks are being developed by the Smarter Balanced, the same testing company that is producing the summative tests.
Okay.
Dr. Kaiser, are there also any internal measures of accountability against which we assess the effectiveness of our curriculum?
We use benchmarks with our curriculum regularly.
And the intervals in assessing and gauging against the benchmarks, or perhaps grades?
It's every ten weeks for the benchmarks, as well as grades.
And, Dr. Kaiser, these have been looked at by our math department, secondary math department, middle school and high school, and they're comfortable and confident that these curricula will give our students the best math education that we can provide. Is that correct?
Yes, they've been looked at, and materials have been piloted by our math department. Our math departments have undergone a tremendous investment in terms of the hours spent analyzing the standards and analyzing the current practice against the future practice, and the current practice comes up sorely short in terms of what the standards are requiring.
I guess the bigger picture, and it's not necessarily regarding the math, it's as we make changes to Common Core, there are going to be some things that work very, very well, and there's gonna be some things that don't work nearly as well as we would hope they would. What are we doing to prevent the students from taking the brunt of our, I don't wanna call it experimentation, but our, working our way through what the appropriate way of setting up the various classes are? I mean, we have a number of, well, the entire school. I mean, so you have a high school in which they are looking to go to college in the next couple of years, anywhere from one to four years, and having a bad year created because of whatever reason you want to call it, other than their inability to grasp the work, but it reflects in a poor grade, how are we going to protect against things that have gone far worse than, outside of the norm?
Mr. Wong, I think I could answer that, just as a brief overview. The school, every department is looking at their own progress and the progress of their own students, and trying to develop or assess how well the kids have done. What I would propose is that we bring some additional information at our next meeting, because it would be different depending upon the department and the figures, and we could provide that during our April 15th meeting.
That would be great. I think we all, we all understand, whenever there's gonna be a transition, there is the possibility that things are not gonna work the way that you would like them to work. But we just need to make sure that our students don't get penalized for it. And so, I'm looking for, what is that safety net to make sure that they don't bear the brunt of our learning curve?
I just have one question. I see everybody had signed off on this, but were there reservations in the implementation? And if there were, were they completely addressed to the satisfaction of the people that were there?
Actually, the process with math, particularly the high school math courses, which are undergoing the greatest amount of change, the process was very thorough. We brought in Eileen Strauss, who was, at the time, the vice president of the State Board of Education overseeing the math adoptions at the state level, to work with our math teachers, and every math teacher came alongside and worked with her over the course of many hours analyzing the standards, and then working backwards to see which would be the best trajectory or pathway to select. When they made the selection of the integrated programs, it was with 100% buy-in by the teachers, and the level of analysis that occurred during those meetings was absolutely incredible. The other piece that I think that we can all rest assured in Monrovia with is that our teachers are all math content specialists and experts. And so, in terms of interpreting the Common Core standards, there are bits and pieces of mathematical conceptual development that, to somebody who's not trained as a mathematician, may not understand the nuances of that, these math teachers are very expert at what they do. And so, in terms of buy-in and in terms of preparation, that piece has been secured. Another piece that was secured, we brought in Cal Poly math expert, Ph.D., Lillian Malitzki, through a process called Strengthening Mathematics Instruction, and she took every one of our middle school and high school teachers through a course that's called Strengthening Mathematics Instruction that was paid for by the CSU. The reason that the California State University system invested so heavily in this process for teachers in the K-12 system is because many students were coming out of K-12, having to take remedial classes when they entered college. And when students are taking remedial classes, they don't get out of college in four years. And so, the California State University has in their mission statement and in their vision that students will enter as freshmen, complete as seniors, and be done in four years. In order to do that, they had to help us with some of the pedagogy and some of the pieces that we, as a system, have here. So, in Monrovia, we had 100% of our teachers go through that training, as well as the work with Eileen Strauss. And so, these are not decisions that were made overnight or made lightly. The homework has been done in earnest, along with the professional development, and we're continuing that professional development. It's not something that we've made a decision, and now we're just going to rest and step aside, but rather, continue to support our teachers through the development of these courses while they're beginning and working through this first year.
Any one questions or discussion? Father, would you take?
Board Member Williams?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
President Gillan?
Yes.
Motion carries four-zero.
Item 6.2 is Course Proposal for Integrated Math 2. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? I think Dr. Kaiser's covered this. Ms. Marakanda, please take the vote.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board Member Williams?
Yes.
President Gillan?
Yes.
Motion carries four-zero.
Item 6.3 is Course Proposal for Integrated Math 3. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Marakanda, please take the vote.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board Member Williams?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
President Gillan?
Yes.
Motion carries four-zero.
Item 6.4 is Revised Course Proposal for Math Analysis. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Marakanda, please take the vote.
Board Member Williams?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
President Gillan?
Yes.
Motion carries four-zero.
Item 6.5 is Revised Course Proposal for Math Analysis Honors. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Marakanda, please take the vote.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board Member Williams?
Yes.
President Gillan?
Yes.
Motion carries four-zero.
Item 6.6 is Adoption of Recommended Math Textbooks. Could I have a motion, please?
Move it. Second.
All right, Dr. Kaiser, would you like to talk to us a little about the textbooks that go along with this?
I'd love to. These are the textbooks that would go along with the courses, allowing our teachers to have the proper materials to teach these courses with. And so, we're seeking the adoption of the textbooks for, the textbooks, California Integrated Math 1 by Hooten Mifflin-Harcourt, California Integrated Mathematics 2 by Hooten Mifflin-Harcourt, California Integrated Mathematics 3 by Hooten Mifflin-Harcourt, and Precalculus 5th Edition by Pearson.
Any questions or discussion? Ms. Marakanda, please take the vote.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Williams?
Yes.
President Gillan?
Yes.
Motion carries four-zero.
All right, so, Item 6.7 is Public Review of Recommended Bridge Supplemental Instruction Material for Middle School. Ms. Dr. Kaiser?
Yes, indeed. We have on display recommend, bridge supplemental instructional materials for middle schools in the area of math, looking at the Glencoe Math Accelerated by McGraw-Hill. At the middle grades level, we have the option of accelerating math for our honor students, and in order to do that, the middle schools have, are not requesting to adopt materials right now. They're requesting to utilize bridge materials along with our older materials to bridge to those standards until they can make a more solid decision on a permanent adoption. And so, these will be on display.
Any questions or discussion? Mr. Allen? No. I do have one question. Will these be on display at both middle schools and the district office, or just at the district office?
Right now, they're just at the district office, but we certainly could request another copy for the middle schools.
I think since they're gonna be for the middle schools, it would be good to have copies at the middle schools.
We can do that.
Dr. Kaiser, I'm sort of, I am not sort of, I am interested. May we have a copy?
Absolutely.
When I took the math book home last year from the seventh grade, it was enlightening. Before I approve something that somebody do, I might as well know what's in it, so I took a math book home myself.
Absolutely. I will make that request tomorrow.
Did it make you want to take seventh-grade math?
Maybe you want to go back to school again.
All right, any more discussion? All right, we'll accept that, and then, next board meeting, I, two weeks, yeah.
Yes.
Two, two board meetings. You'll bring that back on the consent agenda, unless there's any questions that come up? All right, Item 6.6, Licensing Agreement with Document Tracking Services. Could I have a motion, please?
Did we vote on the last one by chance?
We don't need to vote on the, it's just, we accept it.
Okay.
It'll be, it'll be available for review.
That's right.
And then, we'll, we'll vote on it after the review period's over.
You're right. Thank you. So, if we could just- So, I'll move this one.
All right?
Second.
All right, Dr. Kaiser, would you like to talk about the document tracking services, please?
I'd love to. As you know, we are up to our elbows in working on our local control accountability plan, and along with that, we also have the Single Plan for Student Achievement, and we have the Local Educational Plan, we have the English Learner Master Plan, the WASC Self-Study. The doc tracking system allows us to populate one system, and then, all of those plans get populated with that data. It take, it carries it to- It take, it carries it to each plan, so you only input the data one time. And so the doc tracking system is a relatively new system. There have been several of them, and we're finding that this will cut down on man-hours tremendously. The cost of this system is $3,000, and so we're asking for approval of the licensing agreement that will be, last for one year from March 25th this year to March 24th next year.
If you were to take a stab at how many man-hours you think that this would save, what would you guess?
Oh, probably a couple of hundred or more.
And I'm guessing we pay more than $3 an hour?
Yes, we do.
Any more questions or comments? Ms. Maricana, please take the vote.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Williams?
Yes.
President Gilliland?
Yes.
Motion carries for zero.
Moving to item six point nine, Report on Gifted and Talented Education Gate. Ms., Dr. Kaiser?
Yes, I would love to give you a report tonight on our gifted education program for our gifted and talented students. Currently, we have 15.99% of our students in Monrovia that are in the GATE program. The GATE program, we identify kids using two intellectual assessments that are given each year. In the spring, we give the SAGES to all of our third grade students. And our students need to score 26 out of 30 possible points to qualify for GATE. We have relatively few students that qualify using this assessment at the end of third grade. We then, in fourth grade, utilize an assessment called the Ravens. And these assessments are, assessments that are bona fide in terms of looking for students in, in the, that would be in the GATE range with their, their reasoning abilities. The Ravens test is a test that is given to students in grades four to seven, and this is given after a student is nominated by the teacher, administrator, or the parent. Permission is, needs to be granted by the parent to give the student this test, and the student needs to score 95% or better to qualify. The test is done annually in the fall. With the changes from the assessment system, the CST to the Smarter Balance, there will be a variation on the assessment identification criteria that has been used in Monrovia. In 2015, 16, students could, could be identified as GATE students by receiving a four in LA, ELA in math. In 2016 and beyond, will be looking for high achievement as a four in ELA and math for two consecutive years, and specific achievement as a four in ELA or math for two consecutive years. We do have a progression of our programs for GATE students. In elementary school, the GATE programs are enrichment, and the activities include spite, site-based enrichment activities, including after-school programs. Fifth graders go to Astro Camp, and we have differentiated instruction and materials that are used by the teachers in class. In middle schools, the students enroll in pre-AP or the honors track. And in high school, we have students that are taking the AP classes, and they're eligible for the Math and Science Academy. We've had, as one of our LCAP goals under student achievement, a goal of increasing access for AP courses to students. As you know, in 2009, our GATE budget became a part of our Tier III funding, which was flexible funding. So in essence, all of the money that was funding GATE education, specifically that was earmarked, was swept into the general fund. So what does that hold for the future of our goals, of our GATE program? What are the goals for our GATE program? This summer, we're really proud to report to you that we have many teachers, and we'll get you a specific number, teachers are still signing up. We have many teachers that are signing up to attend the GATE conference down at USC, where they will be learning about depth and complexity. This conference is led by an expert who's been working in GATE education at USC and researching GATE education for over 30 years, Dr. Sandra Kaplan. She is truly the largest expert in the United States on this area. And our teachers, because we're right here in Southern California, will have the opportunity of spending three days at the conference with their principal, learning about depth and complexity. As we're entering into that type of training, we also will be supporting them in their classrooms next year, helping them to develop those lessons and those units of instruction for students. We will convene a GATE Advisory Committee to develop a new GATE matrix with eligibility in the light of Smarter Balance. As the assessment system changes, so will our qualification criteria. It will need to. Increased enrollment and access to AP courses in conjunction with our LCAP is in our goal number one, dealing with student achievement. And we are including a sub-goal aimed at increasing the enrollment of AP courses and rigorous courses for all. As a final thought, as teachers and administrators strive to implement the Common Core, the Depth of Knowledge Framework will continue to be at the forefront of program development for all students, with the focus on differentiating learning for all of our students, including our gifted students.
Thank you, Dr. Kaiser. Any questions or comments? I just have a couple. One, you referred to a committee that's going to be formed to look at the GATE program in light of Smarter Balance. Do you have an idea of what the makeup of that committee might look like?
We would like that committee to be made up of teachers, administrators, and parents.
So we'll include parents on that committee?
Yes.
Great. And you referenced some assessment tools that we use currently. Do you see those assessment tools changing as we move to Common Core curriculum?
Those two assessments, the SAGES and the Ravens, both assess thinking skills. And so those will still be very pertinent and very relevant to, because thinking hasn't changed. What will have to change is the metric that has been used in the past with CST. Because now we have Smarter Balance, we need to see how that metric plays out in terms of where the cut points are. There's much that is, is unknown right now in terms of how those scores are going to come out on the other side of the test. So once they come out, we need to have the group analyze them and begin to look at where those cut points should be. With GATE education, it's a little bit different in terms of the identification than identifying students per se, like special ed. In special ed, there's a federal level, and there's, there are actual regulations in the law about how students are qualified. With GATE, it's looking at 10 to 20% of the, of the population as being GATE, and then looking within your school, setting your own criteria within your own school district. So the criteria for Monrovia may be a certain criteria. It may be different in Duarte, or Walnut, or Hacienda, La Puente. Each district sets its own criteria. We do want to keep one, a tool that will look at reasoning, because that's that gifted kind of thinking, that may not associate with somebody who is scoring 100% on a test. They could reason, but they may not, they may have some gaps in their knowledge. Whereas the achievement piece, that's also a GATE criteria, that could catch kids that are extremely high achievers. So we want to look at both types, the talented student as well as the high achieving student.
So those people that are concerned when they look at the local control funding formula and the local control accountability plan, about the emphasis on closing the achievement gap, can be assured that we're also looking at the end of the spectrum, that's the gifted and talented, and we're not going to lose that program.
Absolutely not.
That's so, means so much to, to many parents, so.
Right.
That's a good assurance for them. Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you. Item six point one zero, Modified, Monroe Unified School District Local Education Agency Plan Addendum. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
All right. Dr. Kaiser?
Hello again. We were seeking approval of the addendum for the local control, the Local Educational Agency Plan, the LEA Plan. This is an annual update, and we have aligned it to the activities and goals that are in the LCAP. And that is what the addendum contains, are those alignment pieces.
Yes.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
President Gilliland?
Yes.
Motion carries for zero.
Item six point one one, Agreement with Naviance. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
All right. Once again, Dr. Kaiser?
Good evening. We're very excited to bring to you for approval the Naviance program. The superintendent and I and several of our team members met with Naviance recently after hearing about Naviance from several districts. What Naviance is, it's a tool that we, is an electronic tool to use with our students in helping them to develop a six-year plan that is the school-to-career plan. And it starts in middle school and tracks them all the way through high school. The tool has several features. One is that it, it has the ability of helping students to keep on track toward a pathway if they're looking at a, a pathway in math and science, or maybe engineering or nursing. Are they taking the right courses that will fortify their, their high school years to get them into the college, that will help them with that major or that program? Another thing that Naviance does is every year, it has a different interest inventory or strengths inventory for students to take a test to find out, what is my style? What are the kinds of things that I'm interested in? Are my interests similar to those of, of people who are engineers, or teachers, or, or people that are CEOs of companies? What kinds of interests in, in the workforce do my interests match? Helping me to, to ferret out what it is that I may want to be when I grow up. Again, helping with that school-to-career piece. And so Naviance is a very powerful piece. Many districts around us are using it with a high level of success. So we're very excited about bringing this, and it's something that we had written into our local control accountability plan in the area of student engagement.
Any questions or comments?
I only have one, one question. And this will be for every student in, from middle to high school?
It will be for every student.
They'll track for six years?
Every student.
Is there any, where is the data stored?
Jason, do you know?
The data would be stored on the hosted servers provided by Naviance, so they maintain their servers. And I should say that before we accepted this, I reviewed their security procedures. I have a list of questionnaires that I sent to Naviance and received a response, and I'm comfortable that they're taking appropriate measures to ensure that the data stored on their servers is secure.
I know I have a question in here, because that was, that was nice, but the information that goes on to their servers is, is that if we decide in six years we don't want to be a customer anymore, how do we get all that back?
We have the option to extract that data and manual download, then we could store, then we would have to find a system to put that data in, but the data is accessible to us.
I understand it's accessible to us, but it's on their server.
Is it ours?
Is it ours, or is it theirs at the end of the day?
It is our data. If we end the contract, they have to remove that data from their servers.
Okay. While you, while you formulate your next question, let me ask one. We're talking about plans for these students of ours, six-year plans. Say, okay, if I'm a parent, I look at this and say, are you trying to put my student on a career track from the sixth grade?
No. In the sixth grade, and every year, the purpose for these assessments that they're taking year in and year out is to help them explore options. And so there, there isn't any type of a, a permanent track. Students always have the option. It just helps them find out who they are, what their interests are, and to, to be able to explore other, you know, careers and pathways that will lead them from school to career, school to college.
And it's safe to say our standards for graduation and our standards for what's being taught at the grade levels isn't changing?
It's not changing.
I, I am excited about what we're doing with career path and that connection of the curriculum to career path, so that students have a better idea of what, what they're getting and what career options they have as they take the courses they take. But I don't want to track them from the sixth grade, so I'm glad to hear you say we're not doing that.
Yeah, it does not track them.
All right. Did you formulate another question, Mr. Hammond, or?
Yeah, I was just, I was highlighting where they are in this contract. These are the things and the reason that caused me concern. Item number seven, school agrees it may only disclose the data provided by the clearing house to other educators, which does, it leans towards that it's our information, but we're seeking permission from them in order to give out our own information, which brings the ownership of the information into doubt. Lastly, number 10, the clearing house will institute, maintain a reasonable controls to ensure the integrity, security of its database and data transmissions, which speaks to the first question I had about the safety of the information. And then number eight, we have to give the clearing house prompt notice of such requests for disclosure and reasonably cooperative clearing house efforts to obtain when we want information. That does not sound like it's our information. It sounds like it's their information, and we can have it by permission. That's what it sounds like to me. And that, that does concern me, because these are our students. And I appreciate you anticipating the question about the safety of the students' information that once it gets out there. But I am also equally concerned about the information of the students after the contract is over. If, if the contract is, once we're through with this six-year contract, the information that's been hosted, whose is it? What, what happens to it? Because these are real people, and I want to know that answer.
Can, can we confirm in a very direct manner that this information does and always will belong to the district? And that they are just holding it on our behalf?
That was our conversation. That was my conversation with the representative in, over the phone. The last conversation was, I want to make sure that this data is ours. Once we sever ties, that you delete it from your servers, and we keep all of our data, all of the information. I don't want it held hostage anywhere, or us held hostage to you in order to maintain it. And that was exactly what it is. You can extract it at any time, house it in any manner. There's no limitations or requests necessary. And once our, once we part ways, it is eliminated from their servers.
So is our legal counsel comfortable that this contract conveys that? I mean, it's nice from the assurance of that over the phone, but do we contractually have that ownership?
We can submit it to legal counsel for review.
I, I, is there any, can we bring this back at, at the April 15th, and we can give it to legal counsel to make sure?
Is it time sensitive to this meeting?
We can bring it back.
Thank you.
That, that would help me, is if we're sure that the actual language of this contract makes, makes sure that we retain ownership of that data. All right, so we'll table that and bring it back. I need a motion to table, or just, I need Mr. Hammond to withdraw his motion.
I withdraw my motion.
All right. So we'll bring that back on the April... So we'll bring that back on the April, on the April agenda. All right, Mr. Hammond, I hope, warm up your voice, because I'm not sure mine's going to last through the end of this. Item 7.4, Citizens Bond Oversight Committee Annual Report, Ms. Wu.
Yes, I would like to invite Mr. Shaladon, the chairperson, about the bond oversight committee to report to board for any report.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Now.
Good evening.
Oh, my goodness.
This is my last report. Just wanted to make that clear. This is the annual report to the community for the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. In June of 2006, the community passed Measure M, a $45 million general obligation bond under Proposition 39. On October 2006, the Board of Education appointed the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. The purpose of the committee is to monitor and report on the bond expenditures to ensure that bond proceeds are expended only for the purposes set forth in Measure M, and to issue an annual report to the Board of Education, which is what I'm doing right now. The exact details of the duties of the committee are specified by the ed code. The Citizens Bond Committee serving in this past year included me as chairperson, Kristen Reynolds as vice chair, Eric Nordahl, Katie Gunderson, Joanne Spring, and John Watson as members. Now here's the summary of our meetings. In March of 2014, the committee received and reviewed the bond audit report for 2012, 2013. That audit report verified that funds from the building funds, Measure M, were used for the renovation, construction, furnishing, and equipping of district facilities, and verified that the district has complied with the regulations regarding the use of Measure M bond funds. Pat Ostrey resigned that month due to personal reasons, and so for the following couple of months, we endeavored to fill that vacancy, and the board approved Katie Gunderson to the position at the March 26th board meeting. At the June meeting, the committee received an update that the district OPSC funding application for the seismic mitigation project was approved. The funds, we were told that the funds would not be available until November 2014, when the state released their next bond issuance. The committee reviewed the financial report as of May 31st, 2014. Around $12,600 was spent in payments and incumbences. The ending balance as of May 31st was $446,791. Remember, that's out of $45 million. In September, the board approved the settlement proposal for the dispute surrounding the event center damage, and the committee received and reviewed the financial report for the 2013, 2014 school year. There were minor changes to the budget from the last report. One of the changes was income of $20, income of $100,000 for the settlement agreement for the damage at the MHS event center. The money was placed in a contingency fund to be used for additional work needed on the future seismic mitigation project for the high school band and choir room. In our December meeting, the committee received and reviewed the financial report as of November 30th of that year. The committee received an update on the progress of the seismic mitigation project where the board approved Caltech Corporation for the construction of the seismic retrofit and remodel of Building O. All of the committees were pre-advertised and open to the public, not that anyone else attended, but they were open to the public. The original terms of the committee appointments were for five members to serve a two-year term and two members to serve for a one-year term. Members Eric Nordahl, John Watson, and I just completed our two-year term at the end of March. Katie Gunderson, Kristen Reynolds, and Joanne Spring agreed to serve an additional two-year term, and Katie, I'm sorry, Kristen McReynolds, Kristen Reynolds will serve as the new chairperson for the coming year. The committee has determined that all bond proceeds were expended only on project costs and that no bond proceeds were used on teacher or administration salaries or other operating expenses. And with that, I respectfully submit your support, your report, and thank you for allowing me to serve for the last several years. Good night.
Any comments or questions? Ms. Shaladon, since that's your last report, I want to thank you so much for your service. It's such a valuable service to keep an eye on that money. It's, it's the community's money, and we promise to spend it for the purpose they voted it for, and we appreciate you helping us keep an eye on that and make sure it went for what it was designated for.
I've worked on that bond campaign, I felt it was sort of a duty to make sure that they all got handled the way we've voted to have it.
Thank you. Item 7.5 is E-Rate Internet Connection for All Schools Proposal and Award of Contracts to Foothill Education Technology Partnership. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Buchanan.
Good evening, President Gilliland, board. We're bringing this contract back for the board approval. This is for internet connection. FTP was the lowest cost provider. And I know there were additional questions, and I'll hand that to Dr. Therosi.
I believe the information that we requested at the last meeting was provided to the board members and.
Unless there are any other additional questions, one of the, the pieces that did come up during our meeting was whether or not JPA would better serve the interests of, of the organization, and that is something in which every person present was interested in pursuing further. So there was no, that was not a difficult conversation to have. It was, wow, I, I wonder why we didn't do that. But very few people who were there in their original time, when it was first established, are still present.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Marakanda, please take the vote.
Board Member Hammond?
No.
Board Member Williams?
Yes.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
President Gilliland?
Yes.
Motion carries 3-1.
7.6, E-Rate Managed Internal Broadband Service Proposal and Award of Contract. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Mr. Buchanan.
Good evening, Mr. President, board. We're asking the board to approve the contract for E-Rate Managed Internal Broadband Services with Network Integration Company Partners. The total contract is for $24,000. It is contingent upon E-Rate funding of estimated about $17,000. If we do not receive the funding, then we will not move forward with the contract. The cost of the district after E-Rate funding would be about $7,000. This contract will allow us to consolidate some existing support costs that we have traditionally engaged in, address some maintenance concerns that we have deferred, specifically switch upgrades, and provide additional support during critical incidences.
And here again, I believe the requested information from the last meeting was received by all the board members. Any questions or comments? Ms. Marakanda, please take the vote.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Williams?
Yes.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
President Gilliland?
Yes.
Motion carries for a zero.
Item 7.8 is the 2006 Measure M Bond Refinance Exploration. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Wu.
Good evening. And the community passed the $45 million, 2006 bond back to June 620, 2006. And at that time, the interest rate on the bond is 4.9%. But as you know, that recently the Fed kept the interest low, historically low. So by refinancing this bond, the district were able to, most likely is the community were able to take advantage of the low interest rate. Eventually, it will save the community property owner on their property tax. So this benefited for the, the property owner of this community, and the district want to, as a token, to send the community, send, send, send you notice to the community to thank their support for, and pass the bond and modernize our high school campus.
Questions or comments?
Just a really quick comment. Just too bad Ms. Shaladon wasn't here, because this really kind of falls under what she has been doing as far as oversight of the community money. Even though this is viewed as a refinance, this really, the sole purpose of this is not to generate additional funds for this district. It's not for this district to spend any additional money. This is solely and completely to lower existing tax bills. This is in, in the board's definite section of responsibility is to reduce costs where never possible to, to the people we serve. And here's an option, here's a case in which Ms. Wu or her staff will be able to hopefully reduce expenses without, without having any negative impact to the services that we provide.
And this motion is to institute the exploration. If we, if you find that we can save money by refinancing, you'll bring that back as a separate motion and board action.
Yes, once we, I'm, tomorrow I will receive the several proposal, and I will work with the board and superintend to finalize the, the underwriter or financial advisor who can help us. And we are trying to be in the timing. Timing is essential, and the interest rate change every day. So we want to move this as quick as possible so that the community can take full advantage of a low interest rate right now.
So if we're in a, in a hurry, should we be making the motion to refinance if it makes economic sense, rather than just to explore the option, or?
At this point in time, I think what we're doing is, the, the numbers are, are pretty clear that it is going to be advantageous for this district to do it. And what we need to do now, just based off those initial numbers, is we want to make sure that we have competitive bids from, in my opinion, at least three different financial advisors, underwriters, so we can make sure that we are getting not only the best price and cost, but the best structure that's available as well. And that will take a little bit of time for them to put things together. I think that this particular motion is basically just telling Ms. Wu to move forward, and then by the time we get things structured, which will not be overnight, just like refinancing a house, we'll have plenty of time to get things going.
Just wanted to make sure that we're not foregoing an opportunity by not approving it tonight.
I think we're good.
Good. Any other comments or questions? Ms. Marakanda, please take the vote.
Board Member Williams?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
President Gilliland?
Yes.
Motion carries for a zero.
Item 9.1 is Resolution in Recognition of Centennial Celebration of Citrus College. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Therosian.
Citrus College has been a wonderful partner for us over the last 100 years, and we'd like to recognize that partnership by passing this resolution, which will be included in their birthday celebration book for their centennial celebration on June 3rd, 2015.
Any questions or comments?
The comment that I was just made aware of, not that I believe in symbolism, having been an English teacher for many years, this is Resolution 15-100.
Do we need to read that end of the motion, or is it? All right, we have a motion on the table, no more comments or questions. Ms. Marakanda, please take the vote.
Board Member Williams?
Yes.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
President Gilliland?
Yes.
Motion carries for a zero.
Item 9.2 is Pending Board Issues. Dr. Therosian.
This evening, we reviewed quite a few of the items listed under our cyclical reports, and we will continue on the 15th.
All right, no major changes to that. All right, old business, next regular board meeting is the 15th of April, then we have the 29th, on May the 13th, and May the 27th. May 19th will be our Joint Personnel Commission Board Meeting where we celebrate the classified employee of the year. Any other old business? Moving on to new business now. This is new business, so I'm going to give some information here, and I really intended to open the meeting in honor of a couple of people, but in the press of business there, I missed that, and I think this qualifies under new business, because we've had some additions to our district staff family, and they're, they're new family members. Our first one I want to recognize is baby Dylan Jude Marcos, was born March 11th, 2015, to Lindsay Marcos, our fifth grade teacher at Wild Rose Elementary School. And the proud grandmother of baby Dylan is Sonia Klein, who works at the district office. Secondly, want to welcome baby Camber Hart Chica, who was born on March 19th to Robin Hart Chica, a PE teacher at Monrovia High School. And the proud grandparents of Camber are David Hart, our PE teacher at Santa Fe Middle School, and John and Jan, not John, Jan Hart at Clifton Middle School. So congratulation to them, and welcome to new district family members. All right, dates to calendar are March 25th, Caesar Chavez Day, and March 30th through April 3rd are spring break, so tomorrow's the last day of school for a little while, and our staff and students, I know, are looking forward to that break. We have strategic planning meetings and open houses coming up, and a PTA awards dinner on April 9th. Any other new business?
The reading.
Yes. As we mentioned during the honor of our soccer team tomorrow night, 5 o'clock at the Band Shell in Library Park, we're going to be having a parade to celebrate as a community the CIF championships, both the wrestling and the soccer championships.
Our lady wrestler.
Wrestling championships and soccer championships, both we're celebrating as a community. Those CIF championships are, are special, they're something to celebrate. And then at 6 o'clock, that's at 5 o'clock, then at 6 o'clock is the rally for the March for Balance. And there's been some questions about having the one follow the other, but they're, they're two separate events. We're going to celebrate the CIF championships, and then we're going to go ahead with the rally that's been planned for months and months, to culminate this month's, the March for Balance activities under our Healing Connections, and both of those are valuable, valuable community events. So I hope everyone can be there for, for both of those events. Anything else? Hearing none, we will adjourn this meeting at 8:55.